At 6 o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. We do have a forum. Councilman Tierney will not be here tonight.
Correct.
Okay. Chief of Mayor?
Mayor, on the workshop tonight, we have an update on the international building codes. This is fairly common. We do this annually, and Claire, I don't know, Cleve will be walking you through that update.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. Mayor and council, this is in regards to the international building codes and the set of codes that we govern our, the way our structures are built and maintained in the city and then throughout the region. The international codes come up for adoption every three years. They go through a process, technological review and process, and then lessons learned. And then they're presented, and these are going to be the 2015 codes, and realize that, as most of you know, they're, it goes through a review with COG, and then they make their recommendations on any amendments that are pertinent to our area of Texas, and then they give those to us, and we review them, and we have them ready to present to you. And what I've done with this, I'll do a brief history. It's really about health, it's about life safety in general, and then it's also the technological advances, technological guidance, and then structural guidance is what these codes do for us, for the overall good. The first model codes were written basically as risk reduction through insurance companies because of a number of fires. We could go through the history, but it's been pretty significant over the years. NFPA was probably the first really strong building code that we had out there in the late 1800s. And then it developed into industry and private groups getting together and working on collaborative effort where it would work for industry and then also for the cities and the citizens. So now we have the International Code Council. Prior to that, we had the Building Officials and Building and Code Officials Association, BOKA. We had the International Conference of Building Officials, ICBO. We had the Southern Building Codes Congress, and then we had the ICC. And similar to what we talked about in the green codes, all the green codes getting together and forming one code, that's what all these agencies did is they got together. And they basically maintained their offices, which are the red dots on these maps, and then through a collaborative effort became the ICC, which they've been since 2000. First started in 1994 when they formed it, but the first code came out in 2000, which this city adopted, and then every three years. Keep in mind, we had a 2009 cycle that we did not adopt, and so, because most of the area felt that it really wasn't a good code, so to speak, so they went ahead, and most of us didn't adopt it. So we have the International Building Code, the Energy Code, the Fire Code, the Fuel-Gas Code, Mechanical Code, Plumbing Code, Property Maintenance Code, Residential Code, Existing Building Code, and then the Green Code. Now, all of these are going to be coming forward to you in a presentation for adop- well, it's presentations tonight, but for adoption in the very near future, and then we're looking at the Green Codes in June. We'll probably have to sit down and have another workshop on the Green Code so you can determine again what we've said, how green do you want to be? Choose your shade.
Are we adopting all of the other codes?
Yes, sir.
Has there been any modifications from COG?
I'm going to guess we had the amendments from COG, and what I've got tonight are basically what we feel are significant changes, which you need to be aware of. So we tried to keep it brief. Regards to the Building Code, there's a new provision in the code in regards to occupancy rooftops, exit discharge and fire sprinklers. And I put this down because a lot of people are going to the rooftop style assemblies. We're probably going to see maybe a couple of those in Old Town once they get everything ready overlooking the plaza, and so there's now provisions in preparing for those kind of occupancies for exiting and fire sprinklers. There's also, there's a provision that's kind of going back and forth. Small bathrooms in your apartment complexes were not required to be sprinkled if they're less than 55 square feet. NFPA took that out. They put it, they're wanting to put it back in as a provision. They still feel that it's an exception, but it's, at this time, it's kind of going back and forth, so we just wanted to leave that in. Rooftop access, it used to be you had to have a certain amount of ladder protection, stairway protection, and then there's other technologies out there similar to what we have with the MCL Grand, the ship's ladder that you climb up to the upper levels. So there's more leniency on how we access rooftops from the interior. And then egress through intervening spaces. Old model code used to be where you couldn't go from one room to the next room to an exit. And then they realized that in some of the configurations, a lot of that exiting pattern would go through an enclosed elevator lobby, which before you would have to go immediately to the exterior, but now they allow you to come into the elevator lobby and then disperse from that location. Carbon monoxide detection, if you have, in your apartment complexes, if you have garages attached, or if you have heat fueled, you know, like gas burning furnaces and those kind of things, water heaters, then you're required to have carbon monoxide detection outside the bedrooms. Shower compartments were raised from 70 inches to 72. Why is that significant? I put this in here to show the level of detail that all the codes go through, and that they demonstrated that actually at 70 inches, they were getting more moisture damage, and so they raised the shower compartments to 72, and this is for commercial uses and gyms and places where they have changing rooms. Apartment conversions, we're seeing across the nation, a lot of apartment complexes that are being aged, and they're also being converted into senior living facilities, and so there are now extensive alarm provisions and requirements for retrofitting of those facilities. Attic venting, there's an update to accommodate energy codes. Talked briefly with the fire chief in regards to this because it may change some of the firefighting tactics, because what it is in essence is you see a lot of turbines on top of houses, you see ventilation through the attic spaces. Well, the energy codes and the green codes, they're finding that if they seal off those attic spaces where there's no ventilation in those areas, it actually maintains a lot of the energy that we lose, but it also creates a thicker membrane so that chopping through the roof, you may, you could have up to 68 inches of like a foam member or something like that membrane that you may have to go through. So, but those are provisions that are coming down and being driven mainly by the Energy Existing Building Code was actually Chapter 34 of the Building Code, and now it's its own separate document. And what the existing Building Code does is basically guide you at to what point, depending on the alteration, the change of use, or the damage to a building, does it revert to, or does it go back to the current code where you have to make those applications and bring them to code? Window replacements, all these different items are addressed in that. And then smoke alarms from the bathrooms, they've increased the distance from the doorway. If I'd have known that 23 years ago when my son was little, I wouldn't have had the shower curtain end up in my lap when the alarm went off. Smoke alarms near cooking appliances, if you're my family, they shouldn't even be in the house, but if it exists, if there was one, they increase the distance from cooking appliances. Live work units, these are real important because I think we're going to start seeing those. There's been some discussion around Mill Street over by the bank that there's going to be live work units. There's discussion about other live work units in the area, and that's basically where you have a business downstairs, but you live upstairs. And this code cycle, they decided that one of the things that they absolutely had to do was if they had a work unit that was accessible to the public, which most of them are, then it had to be accessible, and there were no provisions in that, so they've addressed that. And then there's new requirements for recreational facilities in regards to accessibility. If you recall, just in the last couple of years, all of the hotels and motels had to retrofit if they had a swimming pool with the devices, either with ramps or the devices that would help lower and raise somebody into the water. Residential Code has energy and water conservation provisions. We've talked about this a little bit in the Green Code, but they are becoming more restrictive, and a lot of this is being driven by the Department of Energy, and, but there's really no other significant changes. Mechanical Code, ventilation-specific requirements to apartments in motels and hotels, where, you know, most buildings have to have a certain amount of air change. I think it's six air changes per day in that building so you don't have bad air. Well, you're also making that provision in apartments and in hotels and motels, so there's a complete air change. You see that in like the Hilton Garden Inn already because that's a high-rise provision that they have ventilation and it gets air exchanges, but now it's regardless of the height of the building, it's going to be required to have those. Plumbing code, no changes. Everything still goes downhill. International Energy Conservation Code, there are some provisions that allow for performance compliance options versus prescriptive. We call it commissioning, where they can demonstrate through their commissioning process that they believe this is what the building is going to, how it's going to perform, energy efficiency, and then they have to document that over a period of time and prove that hypothesis, if you will, and that's, that's what, one of the provisions that allowed, as opposed to, this is the way you're going to build it, and there's no, there's no room. Now it's more of a, be a little more creative and a little more flexible in your, how you do something. There are additional choices, there's all kinds of energy efficiency packages, there's a lot of requirements in regards to the Energy Code. This, out of all the codes, is probably the most significant. If you recall, when I talked about the Green Code, that your typical lead bronze that you would get if you were going through a lead assessment, you can now achieve, you now achieve that if you meet the requirements of the International Energy Code, the 2015, which is one of the reasons why they all decided to get together and create one code, because we're becoming more and more restrictive or requiring more of people's use of water, water and energy. And then there's the hot water piping insulation and the limits of the lengths. We had quite a discussion in this in the Spear Committee, which is a group that helps people deal with the Energy Code through the state, and what this is forcing is more of the instant heat application, and, you know, you don't have quite the distance anymore that you can travel. If your home is like mine, the bathroom is the farthest away from the water heater, and it runs for five minutes before I can get a hot shower. Now, that heat device has to be within six feet if you're in a three-quarter pipe atmosphere. So there, it, there's a lot more too than the New Energy Code. And it's the one that, there will be some impact on the building community, but it's also mandated by the state that September 1st, we will comply with the 2015 Energy Code, whether we adopt it or not. There's some increased efficiencies for computer rooms and HVAC, and then the efficiency, lighting control and maintenance. The new Energy Code requires a certain amount of daylighting, and if you have a certain room over a certain size and there's daylighting that applies to that room, then your light switches have to detect that daylight and dim the lights or turn them off. There's also the light detection, or the motion detection lighting systems. All of those are part of the new requirements of the 2015 Code. Now I'll let Tim talk about the front door. Any questions?
Good evening. Just wanted to talk a few brief things on the new fire code we're asking you to adopt. As Cleve was saying, yeah, we start with the International Fire Code. It's recommended, I think, in 46 states around the country, and then eventually we make recommendations for adoption locally through the COG, where all of us agree that this is a good idea in the Dallas Metroplex area. But I wanted to highlight a few things that we're asking just in Louisville only that we think is important. There's not a lot of significant changes from the old set to, the 09s to, or, excuse me, the 12s to the 15 code set, but these again are just local stuff we're asking you to take a look at if we think it's important. The first one is in regards to two points of connection to the public water system. We have some provisions in our, in our development ordinances of when that has to take place, but we wanted to put some teeth to it, mainly in an effort to our developers to give them a firm idea of when this requirement would kick in. And we picked 35,000 square feet, so any, any building in excess of 35,000 square feet would require two points of connection to the water system as it forms a loop or a grid throughout the complex. The reason we picked 35,000 is that's about the middle point of when you're going to require three or more fire hydrants on site, and that's significant. What we're trying to accomplish is in a large building, not one single impairment will take out the fire hydrants and the fire sprinkler water for a complex, okay? We'd also have a provision if there's three or more fire hydrants on site, you'd have to do the loop grid with two points of connection for the same reason. And when there's a dead-end water main that would exceed 300 feet, we wouldn't allow that. We'd want the loop system again with two points of connection. And it's just a good risk management practice to have that, so again, one single impairment doesn't take out everything on these larger complexes. The next item we're looking at is regards to the fire department connection. On a fire sprinklered building, you're required to have a fire department connection, which allows our fire department to hook up to the sprinkler system and augment the water supply for the fire sprinklers. When we have a large warehouse with high piled storage, a very challenging fire, we might have multiple inlets, anywhere from four to six of them. Each one of those has to independently be hooked up from a fire engine and screwed onto the fire engine, screwed into the thing, five or six times, and that's a very tiny issue. So we thought in some other jurisdictions in the region, or nationally, it come up, where we'll have them add a large diameter connection to that FTC, where one of our five-inch, our big Os, one single connection will take the place of those other five or six that might be on there. We only see a couple of these a year at the most, but it'll significantly increase the efficiency of the fire department when hooking up to these big warehouses. Relatively minor cost. Next slide. Just enter. Okay, the model code, the International Fire Code, they put a lot of incentives for fire sprinkled buildings, and in this case, I think they went overboard. For a single family dwelling, a normal house, if it's fire sprinkler, they're saying you only need 500 gallons of water to come out of a fire hydrant. Mr. Vaughn, you fought a lot of fire in your day, that's, that's not a lot of water. And in a commercial fire, they're lessening it down to 1,000. It used to be 1,000 minimum for homes and 1,500 gallons a minute minimum for commercial. With the new provisions in the model code, they want it less than that, the 500 to 1,000. And talking with Chief Tittle, where he's at back there, we really only need the water from the fire hydrants if the fire sprinkler system fails. You're going to have, for whatever reason, the sprinkler system didn't work, you have a big fire. The sprinkler system may not even be there, so we need that water, that bigger amount of water in order to fight the fire. So we're asking that we not adopt what, this way lessening of the fire flow requirement for sprinklered buildings. It makes good sense in this case, we feel. And in reality, it's somewhat of a moot point because we require eight-inch water mains in the ground in this city, and with the, with the pressures and flows that we have, we're going to get that anyhow, but we don't want to build in where they could potentially try and convince us to put in small, smaller water mains to get the smaller amount of water. And basically, we're just asking to stay how we've been for years and years. This code change that we're asking here again locally. If you recall, very few variances to the fire code can we bring you all to look at and act upon, but one of the ones that's more common, if we do bring one, is on an existing facility where they're doing some additions or reconfiguration where a new engineering site plan is in play. Our current requirements require either a 24 or 26-foot wide fire lane. I think a week, a meeting or two ago, we asked you to grant a variance for the old Amaranth building, where their existing site only had the 24-foot lanes and needed to grant a 6. We're asking that discretion to be brought back to the staff level. It was in the code for many, many years that the fire code official had the authority to have, accept a lesser lane, a lesser width in the fire lane. It still has it, interestingly enough, for vertical clearance. We require 13-foot vertical clearance, but the code allows discretion at the staff level to say, as long as it works, we can accept that without going to council. I would never bring you guys anything that I felt wasn't safe, and Chief Tittle will agree with you. We would use this authority very, very discretionary, where we feel that this is not creating an unsafe condition whatsoever, but conditions on an existing site won't allow them physically, not monetarily, but physically, to not provide that newer 24, 26-foot fire lane. So it's, it's a, you know, up to you all, but that's what we're asking, is to, to give that authority to the, to the code officials, Chief Tittle.
Can I ask a thing about? So in our retreat, a lot of what we talked about was wanting to streamline, if we had variances that went to council all the time, and they just, you know, if they had the support of staff, they tended to get approved. This was our attempt to do that in this particular instance, was we felt that a lot, if staff was supportive of it, council typically voiced their approval on it, and so we wanted to streamline our development process in that way. So that was our hope. There also is an appeal process that's written into the fire code already, that if someone doesn't like our fire marshal's decision, they can appeal it to council. So that's already there as well. And I think with the other local amendments that Tim has proposed, we're being conservative with fire protection in our city. We're more conservative than our neighboring cities because we, we feel it's important, and I think we've got the support of our, our chief as well as our fire marshal, so that's what we're proposing.
So from a developer's standpoint, wouldn't this allow most of them to come in with the 24-foot? I mean, if I'm building a complex or whatever it is, I'm going to want, look for, desire every foot I can for the footprint of my building, or landscaping, or whatever the case may be. So from future development, aren't we saying that basically 24, 24-foot width is going to be fine?
I think you're entirely correct in that developers definitely want to save as much land for their building and other uses on a site that they could. New development, I, I can't even imagine a situation, though I guess it could occur, where they're asking us to be, to provide a lesser or a smaller width than the required 24 or 26. With greenfield development, a brand-new development on a new field, design that in. I don't see that as ever really becoming an issue. Could it potentially? Certainly, but I can't see granting them that discretion when there's the ability to do it. It might not be desirable. We're talking cases where it's physically not possible, where they would either have to move the building or potentially lose parking spaces, which, you know, they might need and we want them to have, but we still feel the lesser width would still provide adequate fire safety. And it'd be a case-by-case basis, but it's really on these existing sites that we're looking at, where they're, they're redeveloping, they're adding on, repurposing the building into a new use where these triggers might happen. And again, it would be very discretionary. I think we've brought maybe four of these in my seven years to you, but it's the most common variance I, I bring to you guys. We wouldn't frankly, we would discourage bringing a variance to council if myself or Chief Tittle were in favor and supportive of it. So again, we're just trying to streamline the process because it seems like for the most part, where we make a staff recommendation, we've obviously followed that over the years. And we're just trying to streamline and save, save time and energy for everybody.
I think what your concern, Councilmember Vaughn, is getting at is, are we giving our staff unbridled discretion to where we, is that, is that your concern? Is that developers can just come in and ask for an exception and we can just willy-nilly, you know, it's never going to come to you? Is that, is that the concern? Because I think our, the way we would draft it is to limit, I mean, we're not going to have unlimited, Tim doesn't get to just decide, there would be some type of hardship, you know, a lack of, if there was a design issue on the lot. Does that get to your concern?
No. Having Tim or the fire department having the authority to make the decision is really not my concern.
Okay.
My concern is, as a developer, I'm putting up a building, and it would, I can't see why I wouldn't want that two feet for some purpose if it's available. And the way this sounds to me, I mean, what Tim is classifying as a hardship is, I want, as an example, I want these units to have 1,000 square feet. Well, if I can get down to 24-foot width in the fire line, I can do that. So as a developer, I come to Tim and I say, well, that's a hardship for me. And so we just, you know, it's, it's kind of a given that, you know, it'll be given.
I would tell you it wouldn't be a given, that the chief and the fire marshal are going to look at this. Certainly, if it's, you know, it's green development, we're going to, we're going to hold their feet to the fire. I'm looking at my chief, and he's shaking his head yes.
I can just interject here. I think most of what we're going to see here is an example of what we just had, one or two council meetings ago, and that's going to be a building that's either adding on to or repurposing, and all their new area on the redevelopment, they, they were going to have to maintain the 26-foot width, but the existing fire lanes were physically, the way they sat on the property, physically impossible for them to add the two feet to, so we allowed a variance that they could stay at 24 feet on the existing fire lanes, but the new ones for the addition were going to have to be at the 26. And I think those are the types of things we're going to mostly see is on repurposing, as Mr. Eppolito said, or adding on to, changing and development, where they would have to bring the existing ones up to code. And if they just physically can't do that because it's going to mean cutting part of the building off or whatever, we can look at those on a case-by-case basis and rule accordingly.
Certainly, if it's not saved, even on existing, the chief's not going to recommend that.
All right. Thank you.
I think that's all we have.
That clarifies it for me. Where it would apply.
I think that's all for Cleve and I's presentation, if you have any questions for us.
Questions?
Any question?
Very concise, a point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Mayor, the new fire truck is out on this side of the building, I believe. For those of you that were not able to attend the ceremony, if you were to take just a few minutes.
They actually may be gone.
Is it gone?
I told them that if anybody's going to look at it, it would be before 6:00, and at 6:00, they could, they could.
You can't call them back?
Oh, we can. Absolutely.
But it's, catch that at another point.
We'll bring it back. If you guys would like to see, we'll bring it back.
They will be here for the council meeting, so we can get them here earlier if you want.
Okay. We'll do that on the next meeting, Mayor.
Okay. You talking about today, Tim, before 7:00 or next time?
Yes, yes, no, before 7:00 today.
We might let out a little earlier.
They're coming back in support of our telecommunications.
Okay. Well, let's get on to the other part, the rest of the agenda. We'll start with invocation, pleas to the plagues, and then proclamations. And for those that don't know, Gene Carey, former mayor, died today. So, just thoughts and prayers with this family. Adam number one, public hearings. Adam number two. Adam number three.
This is the South Village project. I know many of you have asked questions about this particular project, so we are starting to see it move forward. So this is the final zoning cleanup that we needed to take it to Old Town mixed use, and in your backup memo, we talk about next steps related to this project. So it would be coming to council on April 18th for final approval of the plat and two variances.
And that's the one that's going to P&amp;Z Wednesday in this week, or tomorrow?
Yes, April 5th, it'll be going to P&amp;Z.
Okay, tomorrow. Okay.
So it is moving forward.
Thank you. Now the consent agenda, Adam four. Adam five. Adam six.
This is a project that we held. It was actually added to your 4B budget a number of years ago, but because of different considerations with Lake Park, it was held, so.
Any questions on the consent agenda? Okay. Item seven, charrette.
I wanted to bring this concept to you in relation to the charrette, that we would bring in actually a couple of consultants to work with representatives of board members, of boards that are involved in Old Town, like the Arts Board, the Old Town TEP, the Old Town DRC, 2025 Committee, that, and the two consultants, Jason Clutch, we've talked with Jason a number of times, and he's had an expertise in looking at the market and making decisions on what best fits and being able to go after those type of products. So, we've asked him to work with us in looking at the old bank building, to look at what might be the best use for that particular building, and then bring in Beck Architecture later to look at potential designs. So, we're recommending, we've actually given you a list of names. We have confirmed that all of the people on the list are interested. We added a couple of that currently sit on a committee. One is Cheryl Evans-Jones. This is your soon-to-be Councilman Jones' wife, but when I met with her, you know, at the board commission, she's actually the chief financial officer for Clyde Warren Park, and so, she has a lot of expertise related to this particular park. So, we've actually asked her to also participate in the process. Also, various business owners, like Weatherspoon Distillery, we've asked them to participate also. Raj Daniels, several of you know Raj. He is, has a strong background in entrepreneur movement, and so, we've also asked for his participation in the process. And I don't believe at this time we have a specific date.
No, you're looking at the end of April or early May.
And this is the short term and the long term?
They'll look at both the short term and the long term. You know, council has talked about the Entrepreneur Center and we're working through certainly those options. If something were to pop up and we think it's better and we bring that to you, certainly that's still open for discussion.
Any questions right now? Okay. Item eight.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to say a few words on item eight. At our previous council meeting, I felt very negative about this project going forward. Since that time, I have met and talked to the owner of the property, the developer, and also a citizen that's involved in the community. And they have put forth a strong argument to, in support of this project. And when I combine that with the letters from the residents that have withdrawn their objections and texted not having any problem with the traffic flow, I have rethought this, my original position. I will point out that, for me, two things do still remain, and that is, there is some objections still out there from business owners, and also the vacant property, if this project goes forward, that will be established, and how the city will handle that if that occasion arises. But I am no longer in, against this project going forward. After talking to economic development and, again, city staff, it looks like the best use at this current time, and so, I withdraw my objections to it.
Thanks for looking into that. Anybody else have any comments on this?
Thank you, Mayor.
Do you have anything?
I also spent some time with them and everything, and I think, more than anything, the withdrawal, the protest from the citizens and everything, and all that they did to make that happen, I appreciated that, so, in agreement with Councilman Vaughn.
Now, with all that being said, do you have something?
Yes, I do, but because we don't have the entire council present tonight, they have requested that it be tabled again until we have a full city.
And again, explain that one more time. I know we've been through it.
I took it to the city attorney.
Probably 20 times, it seems like.
Our ordinance says that if there is a protest sign by the owners of 20% or more of either the land included in the proposed change, or immediately adjoining, extending 200 feet from the land included in the proposed change, then the SUP requires a favorable vote of three-fourths of the entire council, which in this case would be the five voting members.
So, that's where we're at again. But hopefully, it could just go back one more time, one more week.
Five constitutes three-quarters?
Well, it would, in that case, it would, it's three-fourths of the six of you, so that's 4.5, so you round it up to five.
That's what was throwing me off, too, Leroy.
So, maybe I've had some long discussions on that one.
Yes, I had a very long discussion about that one.
So, you just table those one more time.
Okay. Okay. On that one, do we need to, how much do we need to read of that? Just the caption, or?
You can just read captions.
Okay.
Table date, sir. Table to a date, sir.
Table to a date, sir. Hopefully, that'll be the next meeting.
When you say the next meeting.
The next regular council meeting.
Okay. Not the quarterly.
We've got a pretty cool agenda for that.
Okay. Item nine. Item 10. And there's nothing on that. Y'all need any? We've already gone through 11 there. Is there anything else that's showing on that?
We were just talking about whether you guys can actually go out and see the new fire, because it's not technically on the agenda. So, we're trying to figure out a way to allow it.
Okay.
So, I can't have.
We just can't say anything about that.
Who's already, I've already seen it. It is a beautiful vehicle.
Yes, don't talk about it.
If they do it two at a time, it came back.
Well, I mean, three can go, because four's a lot.
Okay. I haven't looked at it, so.
And it should be there, or not, it should be pulled in any second.
Okay.
If three of you want to go, then come back if whoever didn't see it.
I will go do that, and if the public wants to go out, it's going to be on this side, I'm assuming, over here?
It'll be on the west side, yeah.
Maybe you have to recess then.
Okay. Recession, reconvene, okay. We're recessing the workshop, and we're going to reconvene at 7:00 in the council chamber. First item of the business is invocation by Mayor Pro-Tim Ferguson, and a pledge to the American and Texas flags by myself.
I usually just ask you to take a moment of silence, but tonight, with the passing of Mayor Carey, I think everyone in this room should maybe make that the first thought in their mind, so, if you'll take a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, for all.
Under Texas flag, a pledge of allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Next, we'll have some proclamations, yeah, proclamations, excuse me. If I can have Courtney Hill come up, and whoever else, excuse me, Zora Krug, Courtney Sandoval, and Tara Wilson. So, there's two Courtneys. Throw them in here, okay? If y'all would come around here, I'll read this, and I'll ask if anyone has anything to say. It's a proclamation, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that requires police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas an emergency occurs that prompt, occurs the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics, is crucial to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the City of Louisville Police-Fire Communications Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators of the City of Louisville have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Now, therefore, I, Rudy Durham, Mayor of the City of Louisville, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of August 10th through 16th, 2016, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Louisville, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Thank you all for picking that up, for picking that up. Now, if Charlene Collins would come up? Is there anybody else? Ms. Collins? Okay. Whereas Americans are the victims of more than 20 million crimes each year, and crimes can touch the lives of anyone regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status. And whereas too many communities feel disconnected from the justice and social response systems, and have lost trust in the ability of those systems to recognize them and respond to their needs, and whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the right to be heard and to be treated with fairness, dignity, and respect, and working to meet their needs, rebuilds trust in the criminal justice and social service system. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 10th through 16th, 2016, is an opportune time to commit to ensuring that all victims of crime are offered accessible and appropriate services in the aftermath of crime. And whereas the City of Louisville Police Department is hereby dedicated to serving victims, building trust, and restoring hope for justice and healing. Now, therefore, I, Rudy Durham, Mayor of the City of Louisville, Texas, and on behalf of the Louisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 10th through 16th, 2016, Crime Victims Rights Week. Thank you all for this. Item one, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change request from multifamily two district to light industrial district on approximately 0.631 acre tract of land located at approximately 1,200 feet north of State Highway 121 between Leora and Marina Vista Drive. Comments, the applicant requests the rezoning of the property to have the same zoning as the adjacent property on which the applicant intends to develop four office warehouses, warehouse buildings. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. Recommendation is that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. And we have Nika Rendike with City of Louisville staff, and Paul M. Haynes available for questions. Okay. David Hicks, did you want to speak for this item?
I'm just representative of the owner.
Okay, if you have, if we have any questions, that'd be good. Do you want to speak?
No, sir, just any questions.
Okay. Thank you. And Paul Haynes, same thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Is there any questions of the folks here now?
We have to close the public hearing.
Okay. We have a motion to close the public hearing and a second. Did you get those? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Councilman Daniels.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Councilman Ferguson.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Louisville, Texas, by rezoning an approximately 0.631 acre tract of land out of the J.W. Johnson survey, abstract number 1609, and the J. Chounding survey, abstract number 243, located approximately 1,200 feet north of State Highway 121 between Leora Lane and Marina Vista Drive, from multifamily two district zoning to light industrial district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability determining that the public welfare, that the public interest and general welfare demand the zoning change amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item two, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change request from local commercial district to medical district on approximately 4.362 acre lot located at 1165 West FM 3040, approximately 880 feet west of Valley Parkway. Comments, the applicant is requesting medical district zoning to allow for construction of a new senior living facility, which will contain an assisted living and a memory care facility. P&amp;Z recommend approval by a vote of six to zero. Recommendation is that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. And we do have Nika Rendike with City staff available for questions, and also Randy Rivera with G&amp;A Consultant also available. and also, uh, Randy Rivera with G&amp;A Consultant also available. So, anybody else? Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion to close and a second, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay. Councilman Gilmore.
Move to approve as written.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as written.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Lewisville, Texas by rezoning an approximately four-point-three-six-two acre lot legally described as Lot One, Block A, Parkway Baptist Church Edition, located on the north side of West FM thirty-fourty, approximately eight-hundred-and-eighty feet west of South Valley Parkway at eleven sixty-five West FM thirty-fourty, from local commercial district zoning to medical district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability determining that the public interest and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item three, public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change request from General Business District to Old Town Mixed Use District Two on an approximate point one-four-five acre tract of land located at two-seventy-seven South Mill Street. Comments are, the applicant is requesting Old Town Mixed Use Two zoning to allow for a mixed use of commercial and residential that would be part of the larger South Village development. P&amp;Z recommend approval by vote of six to zero. Recommendation is that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above, and again, uh, we have, uh, available for questions, Nika Rendike with the City, and Henry Romani, uh, with Hat Group LLC, if there's any questions. Okay. Councilman Ferguson.
Uh, no one else wishes to speak, move to close the public hearing at this time.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Uh, Councilman Ferguson.
Uh, move to approve as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Councilman Gilmore.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Lewisville, Texas by rezoning an approximately point one-four-five acre tract of land out of the J.W. King survey, abstract number six-nine-six, located on the west side of South Mill Street, approximately three-hundred-and-fifty feet south of Elm Street at two-seventy-seven South Mill Street, from General Business District zoning to Old Town Mixed Use Two district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability determining that the public interest and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're down to visitors, visitors and citizens forum. At this time, any person with business before the City Council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Uh, first card I have up is James Kunkie. And James, if you could give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir, James Kunkie, uh, four-two-four Crestview Point Drive, Lewisville, Texas. Mayor, it's with a heavy heart that I come before you today to read an official proclamation of the City of Lewisville that was issued at about four-thirty this afternoon. Today, the City of Lewisville has lost a close friend and enthusiastic champion, former mayor Gene Carey. Mayor Carey was the twenty-first person to serve in that office, and his four terms, totaling nine years, made him the longest-tenured mayor in Lewisville history. However, it was not his tenure that made him a beloved and respected figure. It was his steadfast dedication to a community that had been his home since nineteen seventy-two, and his sincere concern for all the people who live and work in Lewisville that made Mayor Carey the kind of leader who comes along so rarely and makes such a tremendous impact. His deep love for Lewisville extended beyond public office and included active membership at Lakeland Baptist Church, volunteer work with Christian Community Action, and membership in Citizens Police Academy alumni, Denton County Republican Men's Club, and Lewisville Economic Development Foundation. While we mourn his passing, we will forever honor the memory and legacy of Mayor Gene Carey. The small town of Lewisville to which he and his family moved in nineteen seventy-two has grown into a thriving city of one-hundred-thousand people. His efforts helped make that possible, and his positive influence on Lewisville will endure for generations. Now, therefore, Rudy Durham, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, as a mark of respect for the memory of Gene Carey by the authority vested in him as mayor of the City of Lewisville, hereby orders that the Lewisville City flag shall be flown at half-staff from this time until sunset on the date of interment at City Hall and upon all municipal buildings and grounds. Proclaim this the fourth day of April, two thousand sixteen. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Next card I have here is L. Robert and Anita Glenn. Come on up, sir. Sir, if I can get your, uh, name and address for the record, please.
Uh, the matters that, uh, we bring to your attention are ma- mainly personal and civic. We do understand how you have rules and regulations. After all, I served two times, wartime voluntarily in, uh, in the military, and I've got a long, hard record behind me about, uh, being a, a good citizen. However, we are facing some horrendous situations in our personal life. Many of you might be able to recognize the, uh, letters of PTSD. I contend that that is not the proper name for the conditions that are being defined. The proper name should be traumatic stress overload response. There's nothing disordered about the way people respond whenever they have faced hard cases. Anita here has suffered three hardcore drives into what they call PTSD in the past seven years. I'm working hard. I rushed back, studied extra hard to figure out how in the world to help her get e- extra training in addition to what I already had in psychology, criminal justice, social work, et cetera. I had her up to the eighty, eighty-five percent level, uh, of recovery from the very first one when her car was stolen by the world's worst liar, wherein he palmed it off to the local head of the drug cartel. Thirty-eight days later and over seven thousand extra miles on it, it was returned as a rolling death trap. Did we get any justice out of it? No, not whatsoever. I'm carrying on, I will do what I can, what I must, to help her to recover. And she is a brave and bold and strong woman. Ninety-one years of age, but I'll stand her up against the majority of everybody here. All I'm asking of Mark Brown, your code enforcement officer, is to recognize that there in my front yard, I have a very good patch of purple vetch. Now, let me identify the vetch line of, uh, plants. They are predominant, uh, in ancestry to all of the legumes, beans, peas, et cetera. They're nature's natural fertilizer. Also, mixed in to the, that vetch are a few straggling, remaining vines of the dewberry plants. I do know these, these facts because I grew up in that kind of an environment, on the farm, working hard during the Great Depression. Can the City Council consider that if we have really worthwhile natural plants, that we be allowed to at least grow a little bit of it in appropriate cared-for places? I'll admit, our yard gets a little bit ragged-looking. But caring for Anita during all of these times of setback and resetback and a third resetback, the numbers of twenty-four-seven-three-sixty-five do fit what I've been doing and continue to do. And I'm doing what I can to find new and novel ways of help her to recover. I hope she stays with me at least ten or fifty-four years. I intend to be a good citizen, and she already is. So, uh, if you can consider any of our situations and think kindly and act kindly especially, it would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, thank you, sir.
If you have any further questions, uh, at me, uh, on, on this.
We can't take any action tonight, uh, but, uh, hopefully somebody, we'll have the city manager say something here.
Yes, if Cleve Joyner could actually join you outside, he can discuss the issue with you for staff follow-up.
This gentleman right here. He can meet you all out in the lobby.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. And for the record, uh, their address was seven thirty-one Dewberry, Lewisville, seven-five-oh-six-seven. Okay. And I don't have any other cards on this. Uh, next item is consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Councilman Vaughn.
May I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? Can't be any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item seven, regular hearings, consideration of the charrette process for the use and design of one-ninety-one West Main Street. Administrative comments, staff recommends proceeding with the council-requested charrette process to look at both the short and long-term use slash design of bank building located at one-ninety-one West Main Street. Staff also recommends that the council appoint two members from each of the boards that deal with the old-town issues as well as our old-town business owners and expert consultants. Recommendation that the City Council consider the proposed process and charrette team as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Daniels.
Make a motion to, uh, close public hearing where we have a.
Let me ask, uh, city manager, you had a, a list, a recommendation of people?
We do have a list, uh, in your backup, and it's two members, uh, from, uh, each one of the listed boards, the Arts Advisory Board, the Old Town Tiff, the Old Town DRC, and the twenty-twenty-five Committee, as well as several experts and consultants. Uh, and so we have listed the names of each one of those, of those board representatives, and we are recommending that council appoint them, uh, to this charrette process.
I make a motion to approve with the list, uh, that was presented by Donna.
Okay.
Second.
Motion, second, is there any, any other ones that want to be added to that?
No, just a comment from me, I've, I really have to compliment, not, not that our staff disappoints, they're, they're always doing a great job, but I think you've done an outstanding job of putting this panel together as far as the, not just the names that you've chosen, but the diversity of, of, um, input that you'll get. So I was very delighted to see, uh, what you came up with. It was, it's outstanding. I think they'll do a great job.
Good, any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, uh, tabled item, and I am tired of seeing this on here, but we're gonna get it done one of these days, one way or the other. Consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for minor automobile services consisting of a freestanding Goodyear Auto Care Facility and consideration of four associated variances on an approximate one-point-two-one-two acre lot located at the northwest corner of FM thirty-fourty and State Highway one-twenty-one business. Uh, we are in the same position we were, uh, two or three times in the last few weeks that, uh, because of the situation of this and the vote that has to be done, uh, we have to have at least five council members here to, uh, to even possibly, uh, move this on into the future. So we've been asked again to table this. Any discussion, would somebody want to say that?
Um, I'll move to table this item until April eighteenth meeting, City Council.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank y'all again. Thanks for the people that keep showing up at this. Uh, we will get it done, uh, one way or the other, and, and hopefully at the next meeting. Uh, item nine, consideration of variances to the Lewisville City Code, section six dash one-four-four screening devices and section six dash one-oh-three C four, median openings for inspired living at Lewisville located in southeast corner of Valley Parkway and FM thirty-fourty. Administrative comments, the developer has submitted an engineering site plan and final plan for the staff review and intends to construct two new buildings meeting the city's land development regulations with the exception of two variances, A, to allow an alternative screening in lieu, uh, alternative screening wall in lieu of masonry screening wall along the southern property line, and B, to allow median opening spacing less than thirteen-hundred-and-twenty feet. Recommendation that City Council approve the variances as set forth in the caption above. And we have, uh, again, Nika Rendike with the City Economic Development and Planning Department, and Bradley Moss with, uh, PE with Kimberly Horn and Associates, and, uh, they're both available for questions if you have any. Councilman Gilmore.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, before we go any further, uh, I did have a card here from, uh, is it Kerry Kings? That, uh, I assume you're in support but didn't want to speak? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, okay, uh, TJ, you had a motion and.
Move to approve as written.
Who was the second on it, Councilman Ferguson? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item ten, uh, consideration of variance to the Lewisville City Code, section six dash one-four-four screening devices for Creekview one-twenty-one located at the north side of State Highway one-twenty-one between Leora Lane and Marina Vista Drive. Administrative comments, the developer has submitted an engineering site plan and final plan for staff review and intends to construct four buildings meeting the city's land development regulations with the exception of one variance. A, to allow live screening and irrigation in lieu of the required masonry screening wall along the northern property line. wall along the northern property line. Recommendation is that the City Council approve the variance as set forth in the caption above. We also, on this one, we have available for questions, Nika Reniki with the City Economic Development Planning Department, and Paul Haynes, project manager for PK Consulting. Okay, and again, we had Mr. Haynes here and David Hicks. Did y'all want to speak or just available for questions? Okay. Same thing we had on the other part. Councilman Ferguson.
Move to approve as presented.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Eleven, consideration of variance to the Lewisville City Code, Section 6-103(c)(2a) access spacing regarding driveway spacing requirements related to the quick-serve restaurant located at 401 FM 3040. Administrative comments. The prospective property owner is proposing to redevelop the property from a full-service car wash to a new 37,690 square foot building for two restaurants, and is requesting variance to reduce the required separation between driveways to less than 230 feet to keep the existing driveway on the east side of the property in its current location. Recommendation is that the City Council approve the variance as set forth in the caption above. And I do have Mr. Floss here for questions. Is it Brett?
Yeah.
Brett Floss? Okay. We're here for questions, and are you in support of this?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay. Are there any questions at this time? Okay. Councilman Vaughn.
May I make a motion that we approve the variance as stated?
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we're down to reports. Nika, you didn't get up today, so you, okay, thank you.
No, I'm sorry.
Tim?
Linda?
I'm the mayor.
Okay. Okay, you got the lake?
Lake's two tenths of a foot above the conservation pool. They've already started reducing their flow out to accommodate that.
Okay, thank you.
City engineer Dave Savin has a fantastic announcement tonight, council.
Okay. Hey, Mr. Savin.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I want to introduce our new traffic engineer, Sagar Metasey. Sagar comes to us from the city of Lawton, Oklahoma, and prior to that, he was in North Las Vegas, Nevada, and Anchorage, Alaska. Not only is he a professional engineer or a PE, but he's also a PTOE, a professional traffic operations engineer. So we're glad to have Sagar on our staff.
Okay. Welcome aboard.
Mayor, we're extremely excited about this particular position because we recruited now for over how many years, David, in attempt to fill this, this time too?
Well, we've recruited on and off for probably four years.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll sleep better.
Yeah.
Me too. Councilman.
Councilman Daniels.
Yes, Mayor, I've got several items here. First of all, this Thursday, April 7th, at the Annex Building by the library, in the community room, there is a Keep Lewisville Beautiful Garden Secrets class, and it's going to be on container gardening. So for those of you with small yards or trying to conserve water, it's a great class. And then two weeks from then, on April 21st, they're also doing one on fruits, nuts, and berries. So that's exciting. The other thing is, Keep Lewisville Beautiful had their spring cleanup on Saturday, and it was exciting to see, and it's exciting because there's so many parts of the community that are involved. There were close to 800 volunteers, so 800 of our citizens were there picking up trash, and they ranged from families to church groups, fraternities and sororities, school organizations. It's just amazing how many people come out. So that was exciting to see. Very thankful to LISD, who provided the Harmon Parking Lot for us, which I think provided one of the best spring cleanups that KLB has ever had. And then, of course, once again, just the thank yous to the Parks Department. I mean, it wouldn't happen without all their work. They do a great job getting everything set up out there and everything, and it really works. But it's so great to see the entire community come together and close to seven tons of trash, and that doesn't even count some of the bulk items that weren't in there, were picked up on that day. So that's exciting to see. And then last but not least, I do want to just share my thoughts and prayers with the Carey family. Just an incredible amount of respect and admiration for that man, and my thoughts and prayers are with his family.
Councilman Gilmore.
Mayor, on April 30th, we have the Me and My Guy Sock Hop, which is the annual daddy-daughter dance. It'll be Saturday, April 30th, 6 to 9 p.m. at Memorial Park Rec Center. It's a great opportunity to have a really nice time, and our pals team put together a phenomenal event. These are always, these are always a lot of fun for dads and their young daughters between the ages of four and 12.
Thank you. Councilman Ferguson.
Go ahead.
Oh, you nodded?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's my, I just thought you got skipped.
No.
Oh, well, thank you, Mayor. I have activities for the MCL Grand. I have to preface it by saying, um... Give me a moment. It was my pleasure not just to know Mayor Carey, but one of the roles that I, I last worked with him on was the Arts Advisory Board, which he chaired. So I can honestly say that there wasn't anything about this city that wasn't near and dear to him, and that included the arts. So let me read, read this list. Live performances, Lake City's Ballet Theater will present Cinderella, April 8th through 10th. The Black Box Songwriter Series will feature Susan Gibson and Elizabeth Wills on April 10th, presented by the MCL Grand. A Texas Tunes series this weekend will present Max Stalling on April 16th. The Lewisville Lake Symphony will have its season finale concert the evening before, Friday night, April 15th, featuring Brahms First Symphony, which is by many considered to be one of the all-time great masterpieces of symphonic work. Public events, Big One Color Palooza coming up on April 9th, Celebration of Spring, and that's presented by the City of Lewisville and incorporates chalk this way. The Visual Arts League Jam Sessions can continue on Friday nights. The art exhibits, we have LISD Art Show through April 9th in the main gallery, and a presentation called By the Numbers through April 30th on North Gallery. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilman Vaughn.
Mayor, I too would like to offer my thoughts and prayers to Gene Carey and his family. I knew the mayor for many years and worked closely with him through my committee work with the City of Lewisville, and he was a, a great man, and he will be dearly missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor?
City Secretary. Officer, thanks for your service to the community and the same for all your team members. Thank you.
Do you have anything else? Nothing on the closed session?
No, sir.
Okay. We don't have a closed session tonight, so the next item would be, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn in a second.
Second.
All those in favor by saying, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay.